I'll call the meeting to order. It's Monday, October 3rd, and we are meeting in the Westwood Public Library. We'll start the evening with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
I'll start by granting Westcat Commission to videotape the meeting. Is there anybody else who wishes to record the meeting, either audio or video? So, we're gonna start on a very happy high note. Thank goodness Westwood Day was held on the day it was, not the first Saturday in October. I'm gonna start out by acknowledging the leadership team from Recreation Department that made that Westwood Day such a huge success. And, who do we have here? We have Sue Perry, I'm sorry.
Julie Harrington.
Julie Harrington, okay. Taryn Pryor. Paul, I'm gonna wait for you.
It's all them.
Okay, who do we have in the back?
Preston.
Preston.
Preston Spohle.
Jan Tar. Okay. So, with the exception of Paul, because he's on the Rec Commission, we'll thank them separately. This team, working with Nicole Banks, did an awesome job making Westwood Day absolutely brilliant success. And I don't wanna say that the past ones weren't, because they absolutely were for the time, and unfortunately, last year's weather was not great. But you took it to a whole new level this year, and I think all of us have been hearing nothing but positives and thank yous, and just such a great feeling that we could turn a community event into something so vibrant and so welcoming for so many. And I've gotta believe the vendors were all pretty happy to be there too. I haven't heard from them directly about getting nods. The food was awesome, the music was awesome, the demonstrations, the cars, the public safety demonstrations, just from start to finish, it was just amazing. I don't know that we have a count, but it seems like there were several thousand people. What are you guys estimating for the count of people who came, based on your...
Probably over six thousand.
Over six thousand people. And from early in the morning until after three o'clock, when it was probably you all wanting to go home and go to bed, there were still people around. That's absolutely amazing. And I guess I'll then acknowledge, Paul, your leadership on the Rec Commission, providing support to this great team, and all the people that serve on the Rec Commission should take great pride in what you accomplished. And I know the volunteers that you recruited are essential to pulling it off. Too many names to possibly give, but people come back to volunteer, recruit new volunteers, and I just think it's all really, really amazing. Does any, do any of you wanna comment about the experience, or just anything that we don't know that you'd like to share with the public? Paul, you want to say anything?
I think I've been elected.
Okay. It was a silent voice vote.
Yeah, I know, I'm the silent one. On behalf of the Recreation Commission, I wanna reiterate your acknowledgement of the recreation staff. What many people may not know is that a key member of the staff ended up leaving a couple of months prior to Westwood Day. So, not only did they pull off this monumental event that takes months and months of planning, the largest Westwood Day ever, but they did it with one man down. So, they pulled together, they assumed duties that they normally did not assume, they took advantage of an outstanding volunteer network. Another thing people may not know is there were actually two organizations, churches, one from Mississippi and one from South Carolina, who brought up eighteen volunteers that worked from eight o'clock in the morning until six o'clock that night, helping out. They were members of one of the community churches from Dedham. I wanna be sure, and Nicole and I have already discussed making sure we acknowledge them for their outstanding support. Just the volunteer support, the organization, every year, this staff, these people right here, take every piece of Westwood Day, and they make it a little better, and they make it a little better, and they make it a little easier. And I just cannot say enough about this staff. On behalf of the Westwood Recreation Commission, on behalf of the people in the town of Westwood, I wanna say heartfelt thank you very, very much, and I am honored to be associated with the Rec Department.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it should also be mentioned, and I will, that Westcat did a phenomenal job capturing the day, and if anybody gets a chance, they should look at the video clip, it's about six minutes long. I actually shared it with my mother this weekend, just to show her what I was so excited about, 'cause it was hard to put into words, the scope. And it was really neat to be able to share that, and I think that, you know, people should repost that. Is it a YouTube, how do you folks, is it on Westcat? Do you know where people can find it?
If you go to our Facebook page, you can find a link to the YouTube, like the YouTube you are on.
And maybe we can get that on the, you have it, okay, it's on the town website as well. That was really great, and awesome to have it. So, gentlemen, any comments?
Yeah, I would just echo what the Chair had to say, but I will tell you, the Friday Night Football game, the energy level was so incredibly high, and the crowd was amazing. And I was fortunate to have a small speaking piece, just one small piece, but to be able to sit up on the booth and look down at all the work was amazing, and that did carry over into the road race Saturday morning, into the events all day long. And I was exhausted just going, I can't imagine how you all felt. But I will tell you, it was great, and I think it was the best one, and you set the bar really high, and you should be really proud of yourselves, because as recently as yesterday afternoon, I had someone approach me and tell me just how great they thought Saturday was. So, I look forward to next year. You doing anything, anything at all? Give Michael and Nancy a call? Given.
A volunteer job.
But not really, it was just a great, it was a great break there. I can't say enough about how great it was.
Yes, thank you. I did not get to go this year, but I can tell you from my kids, they had a fantastic time. I know you guys do tremendous work. I've been involved the last three years. Looking forward to next year, so I'm sure you haven't even thought that part yet. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're gonna move on to other things. I'm really appreciative of you coming out tonight, and we really genuinely mean our comments from the heart. It is such a wonderful thing to bring back to this community, and without your efforts, we wouldn't be able to do it again and again. So, thank you to all of you, and share our appreciation with Nicole. And we look forward to hearing back from you when you wanna debrief and talk about next year. Dare I say it? But you do deserve to debrief and take some time, and so we'll hear from you when you're ready to come back, okay? Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
The next item, just for Chairman's update, I wanna let the public know that yet again, Westwood has successfully applied for and received a rather significant grant. This time, it's for the Complete Streets Program. We received a $400,000 grant on September 21st. Mr. Gillette was able to represent the community in receiving that grant at the State House. The Complete Streets Program is something people can look up online, but just to highlight, it's designed as a program to provide safe and accessible options for all travel modes, including walking, biking, transit, and vehicles. And it's a growing program in the state, and Westwood is one of the leading communities accessing NASTOC grants for this program. So, I wanna congratulate the DPW and Todd Fortune for their successful application. And I will note that the uses of this grant will go towards high street sidewalk improvements between Pond, Andrew 109 up to Millbrook. It will also provide enhancements to other sidewalks along 109 and some bicycle lane markings along Blue Hill Drive. So, this money is very valuable to the community, and it's something we'll continue to pursue. So, Mike, please send our congratulations on to Todd. Two public service announcements. The annual family clinic this year will be held on Saturday, October 15th, at the high school gymnasium from 9:00 a.m. to noon, again, Saturday, October 15th. The vaccine is administered on a first-come, first-served basis. Children under eighteen must be accompanied by an adult, and people should bring their insurance cards with them. And also noteworthy is the flu-miss vaccine will not be available at this clinic. And lastly, there is, the next Islington Center Task Force meeting takes place next week on October 13th, Thursday? Is that Thursday?
Correct.
Thursday night, October 13th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Thurston Middle School Cafeteria. Okay, so now we're gonna get on to some business. My goal for people who have come for the Habitat for Humanity agenda will be to get to that as close to eight as possible. There are a few things that wanna get done beforehand, and then we'll get to that item. Appointments, we have with us tonight, Tom Pryor. Hi, Tom, welcome. Tom is interested in being appointed to the Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Committee, and also Steven Matello. Is Steven here?
Hi, Steven. Steve? Or Steven? Steve, Steve.
Okay, Steve Matello. Steve is also interested in the Pedestrian and Bike Safety Committee. I'm not gonna go into any great detail on your backgrounds, except to ask if there's anything either of you would like to say, Tom, just about your interests, before we appoint you.
I just recently have been a member of the town, a resident of Town 30 East. I'm an avid biker and walker, and I know the difficulty of walking and biking around Westwood, especially with some, from this side of the town to the Islington side, it's been tremendously tough, I think a lot of people on both sides. And also aware that now the neighborhood's kinda disconnected from you to the other side of 109, so when I was told about this committee, Barbara, she's turned to my interest and said, "It's absolutely good." So, I think, well, it's a great cause, it's a great opportunity, it's something lucky involved. I've been through a couple of meetings, just watching it for the last couple of days, the last couple of meetings, and I really liked the approach they did, and what you're doing, especially with the funding that now, that's a huge, so I just have a natural interest in that.
Great. Steve, how about you?
I'd like to echo Tom's sentiments, and I'm also a resident of Westwood, live right across the street from the office that I work at, I've been there for about twenty years now, and working for MediTech, and so I'm walking on a regular, on a normal basis, rarely drive, the less I do it, the more I hate it. So, and, you know, I have two young kids and a dog, and so we're always out in the community, moving around, out and about, either riding our bikes or walking. And I'm a big fan of trying to, you know, make the town safer and friendlier for walkers and bikers alike, you know, and trying to connect the town, and really excited to see these initiatives with the Complete Streets Programs and things of that nature. And I'm really looking forward to be able to assist and help to advocate for, help your town, you know, getting out there and moving around.
Great. Do you want to take up this too, or do you think others?
Sure. Excuse me. I move that we appoint Tom Pryor and Steven Matello to the Pedestrian and Bike Safety Committee, to terms to expire June 9th, 2019. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Okay, gentlemen, you're on. Thank you for stepping forward. Rec Commission, Sheila Moylan has been serving as an associate member, I don't think she's here? No, no, that's fine. Sheila's been serving as an associate member of the Recreation Commission, there is an opening. She's been a regular attendee at the meetings, and she's become a representative for the June Street Playground renovations, and she has expressed interest in now being appointed to full membership, so I'll take a motion on that.
I move that we appoint Sheila Moylan to serve as a regular member of the Recreation Commission, for term to expire June 30th, 2019.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Okay, and Mike O'Hara, a member of the Finance and Warrant Commission, will be a representative to the Long Range Financial Planning Committee. Mike wasn't a full member last year, was working with the Long Range Planning on work on behalf of the Finance and Warrant Commission, but this year is stepping forward to be appointed, so I'll take a motion on that.
I move that Mike O'Hara to serve as a member of the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, for term to expire June 30th, 2017. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. And next, we have two women who have been past award recipients of the Royal London Humanitarian Award, and both have agreed, we appoint them to that particular committee, the Royal London Humanitarian Award Committee. Colleen was one of the inaugural year recipients, and Barbara received the award just this past year. I'll take a motion.
I move that we appoint Colin Campion and Laura Waterhouse to serve on the Royal London Humanitarian Award, for term to expire June 30th, 2017. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Okay, we'll stop with that, and we're gonna go on to Target Extension of Hours. So, hello, are you representing Target?
Yeah, Brian Graham serves there.
Okay, just a second. So, we had at our town meeting in the spring?
Yes, last fall.
In the fall, last fall. We approved allowing for extension of hours, so right now, Target is asking for a one-day permit for extended hours of operation, in accordance with the Code of the Town of Westwood, Chapter 321, Retail Stores and Food Establishments, Section 2, for Target located at 221 University Avenue, and the extended hours are for Friday, November 25th, 2016. And this is specifically to allow the store to open at midnight and continue its operations throughout the day, but the extension request is for midnight to 6:00 a.m., which right now would be prohibited unless we approve it. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Again, Brian Graham, his sourcing leader at the store. You know, Black Friday is one of those days that gets off the holiday season, and we had a hugely successful one last year in the Westwood store. The excitement that built from the team, the community, and those that come in the shop is great. You know, apparently the bylaw allows for this permit to be issued, and we submitted a comprehensive crowd management plan. In addition, I think that's how our police department may decide off on that as well. We plan to hire two police details for that evening, as we did last year, as well when the town has barriers and that sort of thing, for crowd control measures prior to opening, so length consideration.
Questions?
No, I think we did a nice job, Brian, last year, checking the police chief, so I'm okay.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we grant a one-day permit for extended hours of operation in accordance with the Code for the Town of Westwood, Chapter 231, excuse me, 321, Retail Stores and Food Establishments, under Chapter 321, Section 2, for Target located at 221 University Avenue on Friday, November 25th, 2016, from the hours beginning at midnight. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Thank you for coming in, and it's great, very comprehensive plan, and if you have any questions with police detail or whatever, continue to be in touch with the police chief, and we hope that it's another successful year for you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing for common vehicular license for the Ice Cream Ward LLC. In this case, this is a food establishment, actually a new ice cream parlor that will be locating at 305 Washington Street. Janice, would you like to brief us on this?
Yes, everyone too. The purpose tonight of meeting for you is to introduce you to Jim Collins, who's sitting over here.
Hi, Jim.
He is the Director of Operations and Manager of Rugged for the Ice Cream Ward LLC. He has submitted a C V license for the new ice cream parlor you mentioned. The premises is 1100 square feet, seating for 20, and Jim is hoping to open probably in the next six weeks.
Give or take.
Give or take.
Jim, sorry, 305 is where?
305 Washington Street is a formal salon, right in the circle of the pizza, Westwood, Westwood and Givens is it is. So, they'll be offering the usual types of things, ice cream cones, cups on base, bananas, gluten scraps, pots and sodas, the impact, I'm sure you might as well go.
Snipples.
Did I hear sound?
Yeah. All non-fat.
Of course.
At this point, the town planner has reviewed the site plan for the exterior changes that are gonna happen at 305 Washington Street. The building permit is expected to be issued very shortly, $1,000. And the Health Department is reviewing their plans, and have submitted some comments to be revised, and the inspections will be scheduled accordingly as, you know, the construction is coming along and then completed. Let's see, at this time, the Ice Cream Ward does not have a T V A that they're ready to announce, and so I'm asking that they'll consider granting the license to the Ice Cream Ward LLC with the, and then as soon as they decide on their name for the T V A, we would, I would let Christine know, and then present the license for, you know, signing by this.
And this was, this meeting was noticed to the butters?
This meeting was noticed to the butters, as the statue.
And Jim, I just have one question for you, and my colleagues might have others. Have you been operating this LLC for a while, or is this a new business?
This is a brand-new startup business that my boss, Steven Ward, and I have decided to get into. He owns three wholesale garrets, and he sells ice cream to a whole bunch of people, and he said, "You know, what would be great is if we had an old-fashioned ice cream parlor." So, going back with a new look, we just wanted to keep it plain and simple, and ice cream, ice cream and some sodas. So, no, it's a startup, ground-up, that's why it's taken a little bit of a process for us to make sure we're hitting all the right things. The water health was phenomenal with their suggestions coming back to us, so we're working on getting that updated, and the building department also, it's just a matter of a tweak here and there, and we should have that set up this week.
Any questions?
No, I'm looking forward to it.
Oh, my.
There's been a little void since the ice cream place, it's cold, we had a cold storm last night.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, I will take a motion.
I move that we grant the C V license to the Ice Cream Ward LLC located at 305 Washington Street, contingent upon satisfactory inspections of the above-mentioned departments, including the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And further, that once the name of the ice cream parlor is decided on the C V license, it can be printed with the proper name as doing business as. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none.
Thank you, folks.
Jim, welcome to Westwood.
It's awesome to be here, President.
Okay, we look forward to you opening.
Thank you.
Let us know when we need to be there, okay?
All without a doubt.
Yeah, the roof kind of...
Okay. Town flirt on powers welcome, we're delighted to meet you, delighted to have you here. Something we probably have all been hearing about in the news one way or another is there's early voting, and Westwood is going to be doing that, so I'll let you highlight what you would like the town to be aware of, early voting.
I'll do a short form, while that came up years ago, just for federal elections, there's early voting in Massachusetts. And what the law requires is the office of the town clerk to be designated polling place, and also to have a poll open during town court hours. However, we don't have, we're not in, fully in, have access to, so I have designated harvest room with long voter register to vote, as mainly designated early voting polling location. And with that being said, we're going to be open from October 24th, or November 4th, you would go in, just like there'll be one person checking in, we'll be checking list, we'll have polls set up, and it will be open for anybody to come in and vote during business hours, with the exception of on two of the Tuesdays, we'll be open until eight, and then we'll be open on a Friday until 4:30, when all business hours are one, and then we'll be open on Sunday, 8:30 to 4:30, and then on a, I'm sorry, Sunday is going to be 1:00 to 5:00, and then on Saturday, 8:30 to 4:30.
And these will all be posted online, so people can know what the hours are?
Yeah, absolutely, and also part of the law is that we have to do a legal ad in the Western press, so that will be going out probably a week before, and then once again during the time that we're going to vote.
Is that anything that you would wanna send out a robocall for? I know we try to use that.
Dash, that's a, that's a little bit of a...
But maybe when, right before, it's probably the most important thing is to say it's available, and where to go to get the hours?
Yeah, we're already, it's on Westcat, and I'd also love to use the Police Department's voting board, the scrolling board, and we will put that in good location, so that people will know about it. So, we will get the board out, and, you know, I think that this may, this is gonna be a very large turnoff.
So, I heard something on the news, and see if I've heard it correctly. The early voting system is different than absentee ballot, in that, once you have voted, it's done, but with an absentee ballot, if you ended up being able to show up the day of the election, you could change your vote?
As long as you have not, well, as long as you haven't returned your ballot.
As long as you haven't returned it, okay. That part was not clearly stated in what I was hearing.
Yeah, so once you, once you come in and you voted early voting, that's it. You can't go to the polls and vote.
Okay. So, this is just an option?
It's an option for people, there's still absentee voting, so early voting is basically no excuse absentee voting, anybody can go during that time to vote. There's still absentee voting, so people can still apply to an absentee ballot up until the date before the election, remember, is that until noon time, and early voting, also, they have a, they allow us to rule them out as well.
Yeah. You could come in with your ballot?
You could come in and apply, and send your own vote ballot.
Or you can just go in the day you want to vote.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I'm looking at the dates, again, it starts Monday, October 24th, and continues until Friday, November 4th. So, between the 5th to the election day, early voting is not available.
Right. So, early voting will end at one, early voting will end for somebody to go in and vote at the facility at 1:00. However, you can still, so if you wanted to buy mail, mail is in time, so there's a lot of different...
Okay. So, if people have questions, they should call your office?
Definitely, yes.
I hate to say that for a lot of calls, but...
I tried to explain it, there is something on the website, you know, with a good explanation, but it's a, it's a new law, and it's absentee losing to people, but the basic thing people have to know is the early voting period is turned up to October 24th, November 4th.
And we opted into doing this? Was it required, or was it required?
So, it is required, it's required to do it during your normal business hours, but I decided to take it a little bit further, and to allow the weekends to extend, our Tuesday nights will run out, I think it's gonna, it's a service to the community.
Great.
To be clear, they cannot go to the clerk's office, they need to go to Carvey Street.
They need to go to Carvey Street for early voting. They, if they come to the clerk's office, you know, it's absentee voting for people who sign an affidavit that they won't be in town that day, so...
You guys are gonna be busy.
Yes, we've already, we've got our first one, voting applications, I mean...
John, you have a question?
No, I'll leave, grab it, I wish we'd taken it.
Great, great, it should be, it should be great, it's a great opportunity.
Any questions from the public? This is a community service, so anything else you want to add?
There's only, there's a couple other things that I'm discussing with Mike as well. I'm not sure about, and I know I talked to the chief, about having, you know, the police, a police detail, or some of the times, we don't, we just don't know how busy we're getting. You know, we could have ten people, or we could have, you know, a hundred, we have no idea, this is something brand new, like, you know, there's gotta be publicity, I could be, you know, all of the public service announcements.
You can't predict when people will come in.
Yeah, so, you know, we will make, make sure.
Have you thought about asking, and this is something to coordinate, having a couple of designated parking spots in the lot held for this period of time? So, that might make it easier for people to be in and out. I mean, I know business is going on at Carvey Street like any other day of the week, so that would have to be, have to be, maybe that would help, or even along the summer period, designated, that might mitigate the need for a police detail. That might mitigate the need for a police detail.
So, you know, if anybody has another question, just go ahead and give them a call.
Thank you for coming in and letting people know. And again, that will be on the town website, or call clerk's office if you have any questions. And hopefully people will take advantage of this. We're voting on regular days, maybe schedule-wise a challenge, and really do want people to exercise their right to vote. Okay, thanks, Tom. Very good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, pertains to the Habitat for Humanities request before the Board of Selectmen tonight to indicate whether or not we support their application for a comprehensive permit. This is an application that's going to be submitted to the zoning board of appeals. The reason the Board of Selectmen is taking up this item tonight is that one of the elements of the comprehensive permit is a requirement for a letter of support from the executive body in the community, which is this board. This is not a discussion regarding the initial variance request that went before the zoning board of appeals and was subject to an appeal. That is a separate item, so again, this is regarding the intent for South Shore Habitat for Humanity to apply for a comprehensive permit. The way this will go tonight, we'll be hearing from Nora Lochne, who is our community and economic development director regarding this request. We, the board, will have the opportunity to ask her questions, and maybe ask questions of representative from the Habitat for Humanity if they're here. We'll conduct that business, and then we will open it up for public comments or questions. We'll make sure everybody has an opportunity to be heard, and when we get to that, I'll brief you again on how we'll conduct that piece. So I appreciate anybody who's here tonight for this particular agenda item. And I'd like to turn it over to you, Nora, to brief the board on this request.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to start with an explanation for anyone who doesn't know about how this came about. But to start it, I want to give you a couple handouts. You have copies of the current plan in your pocket and a narrative description. What I'm handing out there are photographs, just a single page, of the house that used to be at 5 Highview Street, and copies for anyone who would like to take one. There's three different documents if you want to take one.
For, I would be that possible.
The plan was not in your folder? I'm sorry, let me grab it. Let's write these ones for everybody. Just copy of the plan as well. All right, so, back to the beginning. We're discussing 5 Highview Street. And for those of you who are not familiar with the property, it was a modest, three-bedroom, eight-foot-sized house there, in the early, I'm not sure if it was the late 80s or the early 90s, a family that lived there separated and abandoned structure. And it sat vacant for a number of years and deteriorated over time. Eventually, the town condemned the building and tore it down, and upon tearing down the building, immediately the court ordered to stop work. They had no good seller hole, it was, you know, a partial demolition, so the town fenced off the building to make it the safest for big, and continued in this process to redeem the property through foreclosure for nonpayment of debt. That went on for many, many, over many times, that the town began a redemption process, and the property owner redeemed the property. Eventually, just four months ago, the town was successful in acquiring the property. Immediately upon acquisition, they went in, removed the fence, took out the foundation and everything that was in the foundation, recreated the lot, removed the stone wall, smoothed it over, loaned, and seeped it. And so for a little more than a year now, what's existed has been a lovely grass year. So the town waited the additional period of time necessary before they could full-enrich of the property. And when it had reached that point, they had an auction on this parcel. That auction took place in March. The starting bid was set at the town's cost, that would include the tax, taxes that had not been paid, plus the cost of demolition and cleanup. That amounted to $35,775. So that was the starting bid on the auction. One bid at that price was received, there were no competitive bids at that price, and the property was purchased by John and Ellen Far. They offered the property to Habitat for Humanities to build a single-family affordable dwelling at 5 Highview Street. They did that in what I believe was performance with the town's longstanding policy of trying to meet the affordable needs of our community and the region, grew the side of scattered side of affordable housing units throughout town. They did so with the encouragement of the town's housing agent and the town administrator. And we worked with Habitat for Humanities, with the McCarlands and the administrator to establish a process that this could likely develop our Habitat for Humanities house. We suggested that they go for a comprehensive permit to the zoning board. Habitat for Humanities began preparing this comprehensive permit application and thought that it may be quicker if they just applied for variance. So they went to the zoning board and applied for variance. All the butters were notified, they came out to the meeting, as did some supporters of the project. Many of the butters were concerned about the location of the property and had other concerns, which they have now been invited here tonight to discuss their concerns with you. The board of appeals granted the requested variances. The decision, the meeting was on June 15th of this year. July 14th, the TBA filed this decision, and an appeal of that decision was brought to the board. That appeal is in settlement right now, settlement conference being held. It was made clear to everyone that the Habitat for Humanities was going to file for the comprehensive permit application as they originally intended. Because Westwood is a community that has 10% or more of its housing on the subsized housing inventory, in order to file a comprehensive permit, the chief elected official has to sign on the application and provide a letter of support, as did the housing partnership. So you, the selectmen's chief housing official are being asked to support this project, in order that the application can go to the Department of Housing and Community Development. That's the first step before they return the application for a comprehensive permit to the zoning board of appeals. So that's the step for it now. We also went to the housing partnership and discussed this with them at their meeting on September 30th, and they did generate a letter of support. We have additional letters of support from Jennifer, Reverend Jennifer Phillips of St. John's on behalf of the State Council, and from the Westwood Housing Board that supported this project. So I just wanted to just give you a brief introduction of how we got to where we are. We're looking for additional affordable housing units to meet our 10% requirement on SHI to stay above that 10%, so we are there now. The SHI has recalculated expenses and to have 10% of your units on that listing. We have over 10% of our existing units as of 19, as of 2010. As of 2020, our number of units in town goes up, so our 10% of those units have to drop. So we are on a continual stride to stay above 10%. And this is an opportunity for a scattered site development consistent with our comprehensive plan goals of having scattered site development that we provide housing for affordable family. And we believe that South Shore Habitat for Humanities is an organization that is capable of addressing the needs of our community and doing it in a way that works closely with the neighborhood where the houses are built. There are no representatives from Habitat for Humanity here tonight, because they, this meeting fell on the same day as their major fundraising effort, they've all found and all were all represented, they were unable to attend. But we, they had provided the narrative description of the proposed house, the latest plan. And he'll point out that that latest plan is different than what went to the zoning board. The zoning board had seen a plan for a colonial house, and residents in the neighborhood, some of them expressed an interest in Kate rather than a colonial, so they amended the plans. The site plan has also slightly changed to address some of the issues that were discussed at the zoning hearing. And what you have before you is a request for a letter of support, and you have all the letters that have been notified and asked to come in and speak to you about their concerns in regards to this action.
Nora, it's probably record far, can you describe, how many square feet is this, how many bedrooms, how many apartments?
Um, it's, I believe it's three bedrooms. I don't know the number of bedrooms. Did you see one and a half floor? I think it's one and a half, but I haven't seen, I don't have the final floor plans, which won't be developed until they, they know whether they have support to go forward with the plan.
And do you have a square foot or something?
I believe it's just over 12, 1,200 square feet. So that's not exact, it's somewhere in the 12 to 15 square foot range. It's on a lot that I believe is 7,500 square feet, very typical for that neighborhood. It's a neighborhood of houses, most of which were built in the 40s, some in the 30s, some in the 50s. Some houses in the area have been torn down or substantially renovated, and larger houses have been put in place, but still the majority of homes in the neighborhood barely consistent with that size.
If you can tell, I don't get this, can you, do you know the height from grade?
I don't know the height from grade, but I believe that they're proposing a conforming structure to that. So the maximum height allowed in that zone without variance is 25 feet, and I believe that this structure applies with the average height of 25 feet.
So that was my question, if this was a private developer going in there, what, I said a lot size would be too small, but what other reason would be?
So it's, it's not actually that the lot sizes be small, it's that there has not been a structure there for more than two years. So any of the properties in that neighborhood, their lots are too small. They, they tore their own house and waited two years, they did not be able to build a new house there. If they wanted to replace their house, renovate their house, or even if they had demolished it and came back in one and a half years, they would be able to build a new lot. Once you pass two years after you have demolished a house, it's, you abandon the use, and it's no longer a valuable lot. So the request for a comprehensive permit is to set aside the zoning bylaw restriction that makes it not a built-able lot, use and use is abandoned.
So I guess my question is, if there had not been this gap of two years, I'm sure that this plan would be known with.
Then they would, then they could put a house there as long as it met the setback requirements, or they could go for a special permit from the zoning board that would allow them to vary those setback requirements. This plan, I believe, is short on a side and rear setback. If the house had been standing, had not been demolished more than two years ago, they would be able to give a special permit that does not require hardship relief, and that also comes from the zoning board of appeals. But it's because the building was demolished so long ago, that the only path for them would be variances which require hardship for, or a comprehensive permit.
So I'm sorry to be so dense with you. So the driver of the variance is the length of times it's a built-able lot was there?
That's the driver of, was of the variance and is of the comprehensive plan. So the variance was not the preferred route, it's not what we recommended Habitat for Humanities do, because in order to get a variance, you must show hardship. And I don't know how you show hardship on the parcel. It's not hardship that's the issue, it's the amount of time that's passed.
And so you had said there was, there was settlement conferences, and a judge had asked that all the parties speak. Has there been discussion between Habitat and the neighbors and?
So I believe the judge actually asked that the plaintiff and the defendant speak to each other about a settlement. Habitat, prior to that appeal, had a native meeting. So first, before they even went to the zoning board, they had sent a letter to butters asking them to move to discuss the project, never showed up at that meeting. After the zoning board granted the variances and before an appeal was filed, Habitat reached out to the nation camp to have another meeting, and that meeting, several butters showed up, and they did discuss it. And that's where these new plans came out of that meeting.
And have there been any discussions about landscaping as it relates to the initial TBA review or subsequent to?
I have had discussions with Habitat. I don't know that there have been any discussions with butters, but Habitat has indicated that they are willing to landscape the property to be.
And that would be part of the TBA's review of the property?
TBA may have a requirement of a comprehensive permit, yes. They could require fencing, they could require a specific landscape plan with size and location of shrubs and physical trees. They can dictate where the driveway goes, what style of the house is a comprehensive permit. It's fairly open, board imposed conditions that are reasonable for the property.
And we could barely make suggestions if we wanted to.
Yes, so what we're asking, if the Board of Selectmen wishes to support this application, to send a letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development supporting it, but also raising issues that you would like the zoning board of appeals to specifically consider when it reviews the comprehensive permit application. And those, those issues could involve landscaping, height of the building, material, flooring of the building, any issues that you feel are important to make this blend into the inquiry. Do you have questions?
No, I do, I, and what other dimensions are in the back, they're just common by the, color, twenty-eight by twenty-four, twenty-eight foot, twenty-four.
Is there anything else you want to add before I?
So just an available questions?
Yeah. All right, so the way we do public participation, if anybody is here that hasn't been at similar meetings, I'll call upon people who ask to be acknowledged. I'll probably just go left to right, my left, and ask for input, questions. You need to be acknowledged by me as chair, address your comments, questions to the Board of Selectmen, and we will either respond or seek a response, or hear your comment and take it into consideration. So when, when I call upon you, your name and address is how we start, and try to keep to the point, and we'll just give everybody a chance who wants to speak, and I will. So, starting left to right, anybody who would like to be acknowledged?
I would, but I'd like, these are immediate butters, so perhaps they could speak first, if that's all right.
Happy to do that, please.
Okay. My name's Hannah Gardner, I live at 9 Highview Street. And before I begin, I, I want to say a few things. Number one, I think there would have been more representation from, from the neighborhood had we gotten a little bit more notice for this meeting, and it had not been a Jewish holiday this evening. So I wanted to say that to begin with, it's one of the most holy days of the Jewish year tonight. So, number two, you know, I think I speak on behalf of the neighborhood when I say, you know, we have nothing against Habitat for Humanity, we love Habitat for Humanity to be in our neighborhood, we just have concern about the safety of any, any home to be built on this lot, for a few reasons. And one of those reasons, which may be a little bit hard to tell in this picture, is how sort of the street loops around this home, and how it's a very sort of curvy, windy, already not very safe intersection, I guess is not the right word, but it's an intersection between Highview and Burgess, that cars have to really approach slowly and very carefully because visibility is limited, and it would only become more limited if there was a structure on the, on the property. And it's a place where, where kids are all afternoon and into the early evening, riding bikes and playing. My kid, the other kid said, it's a neighborhood filled with young children. And that corner is really the top of the area where it's flat, so where kids are learning to ride their bikes. Below that area gets very, very steep, and above that area gets very steep, so that is where kids are on scooters, they're on bikes. And building a lot on this, on this property is going to require a lot of vehicles, and there's not a lot of space to put those vehicles. They will all be right in front of my house, and other than that, anywhere that, where they are will be really obstructing sort of normal neighborhood activity in this neighborhood. It's also right where a bus, a children's bus stop is in the morning, and there will be, you know, I, I think, I speak on behalf of many of the neighbors who are worried about how that will work with construction vehicles, especially during an extended construction. You know, that will inevitably involve volunteers, which otherwise we think is wonderful, but it will be, it will be a protracted construction project right where there's a bus stop and right where kids are playing all day. So there, there are some sort of physical safety concerns that we outlined in the letter, but, but that are, you know, really serious for, for the neighbors. There's also some environmental concerns. There are a bunch of neighbors who were, who were in the neighborhood around the time when the family who lived there before was there, and they have all sort of mentioned several cars that deteriorated for decades on this, on this property. And this, this picture, this picture is not. And this, this picture, this picture is not very representative of the pictures that I got of this property over the years when I visited the, the town clerk's office to get pictures. This house was deteriorated beyond recognition that it was even a house. I, I saw a letter that there was an oil tank left there for years with letters to the owner asking for it to be removed. There were cars that, you couldn't even tell what color the cars once were, that were left standing. And before I moved into this home, I'm an environmental health expert, before I moved into this home, I read the Boston Globe article detailing the years of disrepair that this house had undergone, and I immediately thought there, you know, that this has a potential for, for real environmental contamination. And I called several offices, and I was, I was told that there, nothing had been done, nothing had ever been tested, there, there hadn't been attention to, to the fact that there could be environmental contamination. I followed up a few times over the four years that I've lived in this neighborhood about that, and I've been told repeatedly that there's never been any testing, never, there's never been any follow-up about environmental contamination. So when a construction project is done on a lot like that, there's going to be a lot of, of soil being dug up, there's going to be a lot of dust, and like I said, this is where neighborhood kids are playing, and so one of my concerns, more from my own professional expertise, is possible environmental contamination from that. And so those are our main safety concerns, and, and the neighbors would really love to keep it as a green space, which is really limited in our corner of town, especially because the one green, one small green space that was there has now sort of gone into disrepair and is not allowed to be accessed for safety reasons. So this is where, this is a lot where kids can play, and we understand that Duncan McFarland is a huge proponent of green space in Westwood, and we think this is a perfect, a perfect green space for our neighborhood.
Thank you. Would you like to comment as well?
Um, I've just, I-
Just neighborhood.
Oh, Andrew Fish, Andrew Fish, also nine Highview. You know, we haven't seen any kind of comprehensive plan, and I know it's usually, well, you'll get one when, you know, we get the final approvals to go forward, but, you know, I think in order to even consider this, there should definitely be some kind of comprehensive plan regarding the staging, regarding the schedule, regarding the hours of construction. None of this has been established, and I, and I'm, you know, I was a little taken aback at how this was initially kind of almost rushed through, like, well, just try to get that variance and, you know, see if that works, and, and I don't feel like the neighborhood really had enough time to digest what was going on, despite, despite they say everyone got noticed, but we all got together and said, you know, did you get noticed? And everyone was like, no. Nobody really knew exactly what was going on. So I think now that we know, you know, exactly what's happening, again, you know, it's, the concept is great, the organization is great, but this particular spot, I just think poses a lot of, of serious challenges as far as buildability.
Sir, would you like to?
Yes, David Russell, I've at twenty-three Highview, but it's because of the number, it's just one lot away from this. So I also have some concerns about what's in the soil there. The picture that you have doesn't, I think doesn't really reflect the current, all that well, the current topography. It's, it's, it's mounded a lot higher, so once you start digging, you're going to get a lot of runoff, and especially on the, on the Burgess side, it's very steep in the corner coming up to the, the back line of the lot. So concerns there about, that Andrew and Hannah have talked about, about what it's going to look like when you're doing construction and how you're going to move materials around. I think what I would add to what they've said is, if you do approve of this, there are three or four really nice oak trees near the property line with nine, and between five Highview and a hundred Burgess. And I don't know if the current positioning of the house allows them to stay. It may, you know, when I eyeball it, but if there's any way that those could be preserved, that would be really terrific. They're, they're probably sixty, seventy feet high, beautiful trees, and, you know, they help shade and cool and quiet the whole neighborhood. And, and I just, I guess I just echo their concerns also about, about safety with the steepness of the, of the sort of eastern edge of the lot. I know when we went to the zoning board, they agreed to a stipulation that there not be a fence on that side, because people who walk, what they can't see is if you go a little further north, Burgess curves around again to the left, and people who are trying to walk, there are a lot of walkers, both children and adults in that neighborhood. So drivers who come too fast, and they have a blind corner, they're coming south, they're, they've got a blind corner, they're coming around, and I think people along that eastern edge need to be able to scamper up the hill. I've talked to at least two people in the neighborhood who have had to kind of throw themselves onto the property to avoid getting hit. So some sort of prohibition against a hedge or fence in that particular part, I think would help keep the, the place safe.
I just want to reiterate, we're not deciding.
I understand, but, but, can you, is it my understanding, am I correct that you can make recommendations to the zoning board that they?
I just wanted to.
Yes, I understand, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody on this quadrant would like to comment?
Nancy Wannrich, ninety-two Pheasant Hill Street. I'd just like to say, I believe this quarter was actually very representative of the way the house looked not long before it got taken down. It was an adorable house, it wasn't quite as overgrown of mind in the neighborhood, but, and you could tell it was rundown, it had broken windows, the roof was beginning to sag at the back, but it was, I mean, it was, it was a, it was a good house that was unfortunately left in its neglect. I'd like to, you know, it is a small lot, it is a kind of a tricky corner, people tend to come around it a little quickly, but there was a house there that was doing okay for a long time in that situation. I'd also like to say that I would hope there aren't children playing at this intersection, because Burgess is a big busy street, and the, the street goes upward on Highview, and it's really not, you know, not a good place for kids to play. And, you know, I just generally would like to support putting a nice, small house back on that lot, to show anyone that's familiar.
Reverend Chris Dodge, two forty-eight and Hatton Street. I just wanted to offer, on behalf of some of my clergy colleagues in town, a brief summary statement, and maybe a reiteration of what's been shared before, both for Reverend Dr. Jennifer Phillips at St. John's Episcopal, and also Reverend Dr. Stephanie Selinas at First Baptist. As some of the clergy in Westwood, we are in support of Habitat for Humanity and their plans to build a house in our community. Believing in the need for more affordable housing in Westwood, this project provides benefits both to a family in need and to our wider community. Of all the possible benefits from such a project, perhaps the greatest is that a family receives the security that comes from a family-owned home. We're grateful for the good work of Habitat for Humanity, and we celebrate its good track record, both in being considerate of the closest neighbors during the project, construction project, and by their careful selection of the new homeowners. We have no doubt that there would be many members of our congregations volunteering to help with the build, working side by side with the new homeowners and others within our community.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment or ask questions? For the record, I just want to say that the board of selectmen has also received a letter from Rose Powers, who lives at seventy-seven Pheasant Hill Street, generally in support of-
Oh.
Do you want to speak for yourself, or you want to just?
I think, you know, I've been on high grounds, I've had to say, I've been on high ground for twenty-eight years, and while I appreciate your concerns, I think in twenty-eight years I've been there, I, you know, I can't just say that I never thought that corner presented, you know, the traffic issue, and as I noted in my letter, I think that in case, you know, there could be speed problems, and that is shown in the document. Now, you go on Pheasant Hill Street, and if you want to talk about kids on the street.
Yes.
It's the old block, it's the property on that hill, and we get on bikes, we catch the ball, it's just, it's the character of the neighborhood. And, you know, why I say I appreciate, because I'm not, I'm not a generous person. I've got to go ahead and out of the neighborhood five or six times, okay? And I just never seen that.
Thank you very much, thank you. And for the record, we do have an email from Hannah Gardner, who spoke this evening, and we also have a letter that Butters submitted to the zoning board of appeals back in June, highlighting concerns that I believe were shared tonight. And we have a letter from Reverend Dr. Jennifer Phillips, I think one of the people you were referring to, Reverend Dodge, which was from, she's the rector at St. John's Episcopal Church, so those are the submissions we had received as well tonight. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. And so I open it up again to the board, do you have follow-up questions or comments to make?
Well, I, I, you know, we had mentioned this earlier at the beginning, that today was a Jewish holiday. I'm sympathetic to the fact that there might, might be more Butters who at least want to come and voice their opinion, and I know our next meeting is the seventeenth, so I throw in, I was a proposal to continue at that point in time, perhaps that if more Butters come, if they don't come, then, you know, there'll be a pretty quick hearing, so, but I'll leave that to my colleagues to discuss as well.
Yeah, I think for me, you know, it's, it's administrative question. I mean, I, I see how it's going there. I think that it's this question of timing, this driving this, and had a remnant of the old house and left there, or they sought to develop it earlier, we wouldn't be in this process. So I, I think it's, it's an interesting challenge. I, I don't know at the end of the day, that if we get all the people in the room, that someone's going to be pro and someone's going to be con, that ultimately answers the question. To me, I think a house is going to go there. I think that the town adopted a policy years ago about having clustered affordable housing, rather scattered affordable housing, and this fits that plan. That's not to say very quantified concerns, Nora, I guess we'll have to figure out how we do this. If there's a bus stop anywhere near that corner, you know, that's going to have to be moved, and there's a lot that goes into this. I think the safety concerns, I hear you, you know, so I, I do want to hear a little bit about what is it we can attach to any sort of approval, because I do think it's very quantified.
So, so what you would do is you would recommend, prove your letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development, that the zoning board of appeals look at certain issues and attach conditions to any approval to address those issues. So one thing that was mentioned was hours of construction. I'd expect the hours of construction to be the same as they are anywhere in town, limited to between seven AM and eight PM, and lesser hours on weekends. Parking construction vehicles to the manner that blocks the road, that shouldn't happen anywhere. In a case like this, actually, we're using volunteers to work alongside a contractor. You have an ability for an off-site shuttle service that they could employ to address that, so that's an easy condition to fix.
Can, can we add things like protection of the old trees?
So where, where trees, you can require protection of trees where they're not in the way of the house. So I actually have a couple of photographs that I took from the pile, I don't have a single copy of each, but these will be an idea of what the site looks like today, and it helps to show you the grading too. The, the area is actually less, less mounded, it's flatter than it was in that prior purchase, one, prior photos. When the, the DPW demolished the structure and then came back and removed the foundation and the stone wall, they regraded the site to reduce the slope. So it's actually flatter now than it was, it's still a hill, there's no doubt it's a hill. You can see on the site plan that Habitat has the, the contour, so you can see that there is a steep grade, but it's not nearly as steep as I think.
It's got a stone wall, but-
Right at the edge, so it's been, it's slowed more gradually to the street, the longer use of retaining law. But there could be form grade changes, there could be trees that do not have to be removed for the foundation. You'll also notice that the foundation is shown kind of at an angle there, that was a request that came at the zoning board meeting, the original plan, and I don't have one copy, but it shows the house to wear on. So they, they have made some changes, they continue to assess the size and build a building that fits the lot best, that addresses concerns. There certainly could be a condition, and even if there was not a condition, they could not put a fence that blocks the view of, of roadway, it's unsafe, that would not be permitted.
Nora, based on discussions that you have had, or anybody else in the audience has had directed Habitat for Humanity, how long does the typical house construction take to start to finish?
I have not asked that question. I know that they use volunteers to do some of the-
Finish work?
Yeah, unskilled labor in the house, yeah, finish work. So I, I wouldn't expect it to take significantly longer. In fact, I wouldn't expect it to really take any longer than a general construction, because you have so many people who volunteer to do some of that finish work, so it usually gets done faster. But the, the part of construction that a professional will do will take the typical amount of time. So for, just looking at the size of the property, the comparison would be the Girl Scout House that's being constructed next to the Handel School, construction on that, again, I believe in July, and they're expected to have special kids with occupancy by December first. So that's about a six month, five month process. So I think that's probably, that could go as long as nine months, but somewhere in that area. This is a more drawn-out process than any other structural project. Maybe the less of, because the site is already clear. And that's another point I would like to address, as far as environmental issues. We have an affidavit from the Department of Public Works Director Todd Fortune, about the process that was used to go in and remove the items from the foundation hall. There were appliances, I believe, I think there was some spare tires down on the side. The cars were removed many years ago, when, when the town was saying to get on, the cars, the cars actually were removed before the house was demolished.
Does any judge do soil testing? Is anything done to do soil testing?
I don't know that DPW has done soil testing, but Habitat could absolutely do that, and that, that's, that's a very quick and easy thing to do, a forty-second step.
What I have is conditions with the environmental soil testing, perhaps a published staging, scheduling process, communication plan, protection of any trees, any intention to save.
Discussion with the school department to-
Private question.
It was temporarily, one of the bus stop. It is private property, so it's up to the private property owner to decide the use, in this case, or I would like to have the Habitat for Humanity.
You'd ask a lot of those private issues, just in the beginning.
There, there was also concern expressed about potential runoff, management of the site and runoff.
Any property in town, you're required to maintain runoff at no greater rate of runoff post-construction as pre-construction. So the runoff that is experienced on the site now can be no greater after construction. That's a requirement of all development, anywhere in town.
Having driven by there in the past, I know the, the description of the turn on Burgess as it goes by this property, and how people walking need relief, is there the possibility of requesting some grading be done at, along the street side?
On Burgess side?
On Burgess side. To, to create-
To cut back the, to create visibility.
Right, to, to help make it a safer, um-
That, that can certainly be requested, it may affect landscaping that's there, so it might affect having to move the tree, because the grade has to be pulled back, so I, I'd have to look at the site.
I see, I'm looking at the, the, you got a group map, and literally square it off, where it's kind of-
Yeah, yeah, make it safer.
Making us close up the intersection and take the burn off.
Making us close up the intersection and take the burn off.
I think, I think addressing that, I'm not going to profess to be an engineer, a site engineer, but, um, this is an opportunity to create some improvements that are better for the whole area, uh, potentially the homeowners themselves who end up living there, but, um, I think that, that would be a valuable improvement. Yes, ma'am? A late arrival. That's fine.
Marsha Gray, thirty-four Highview Street. I've lived in the area for sixty-five years. My parents came up and were the first people on Burgess beyond this house, um, in nineteen fifty-one. And right now, I live on Highview, but that corner has the best visibility that it's had in a long time.
Because of it being cleaned up?
Right, because it's no longer the stone wall there, and it's no longer, um, bushes and trees and, and everything else, and it, it's just wonderful to come to that intersection and be able to see where you're going. Because you can't do anything on the next curb, because that's a big rock. And they, they didn't take that out when they extended the road because of that.
Lots of ledge. Lots of ledge around this community. As some have learned during construction projects.
So, so, so does that mean you are for? No, I'm just curious.
You can't do that.
Does that mean a for or a against?
I would be for the project that I sympathize with people, decide for any kind of encroachment, um, on their property and having setbacks being smaller than required, because I've had that happen to me with houses that were put up beside me and changed my environment from anything.
Nora, the consideration for where this has been cited that went through the last round, um, is it because of topography or? No, I, the impression I received from Hannah Gardner is that the reset came out of the meeting with the neighbors, that they thought they were resetting it in a manner that would be more, would meet the concerns of the director. I'm just looking at the sixteen point nine feet from the somewhat north end of the lot, wondering, um, if that's where the setback seems to be substantial. Has it been designed now? So that, I, I think Habitat is willing to take a look at the plan and, and cite it. However, it is on the lot, it best satisfies the neighbors. So that should be considered as well.
It leaves lots of frontage for the, for traffic, it's probably...
That's still thirty-three feet back now, and that's the lot. Yes, I was going to ask if anybody else wants to say?
These setbacks are all less than, less than what's required by law currently?
I don't think so. I don't give all of them up, but I think, I think some of the setbacks are less. As you, as you can see through most of the houses in the set neighborhood, most of them do not meet the setback requirements, which is common. The setback requirements were imposed after the houses were built.
So the, the current ones, it sounds like there are few that do not meet current regulations?
The rare setback that I was referring to is one of the...
And the two front ones?
The, the chart here says that it's supposed to be forty feet.
Right. So, so the, the zoning requirements for a, uh, conforming lot, a forty-foot setback, fifty-foot size setbacks except for structures less than fifteen feet tall, which all had to be set back ten feet, and thirty-foot rear setback. If you were to survey the neighborhood, you'd find that there were very few, if any houses, then all. And I think, I think focusing on the setbacks, okay, we'll, we'll not have that. So, yeah, so the, so the proposal does not meet all the setbacks? Right. Which would require a special permit? I think the focus should be on setbacks relative to Butter properties versus street. Okay, um, thank you for everybody's comments. I think, somebody else wanted to...
So is, is there going to be though, Nora, from this point though, it sounds like this plan is fluid, are the Butters, the Ansel, Shore going to talk again?
Well, there's another public process if it goes... Right, so if, if this is going forward to a conference permit, which is somewhat dependent on, on your action that you take, because a conference permit requires your support, um, if it goes forward to a conference permit, then they withdraw additional plans. They would do that and invite the neighborhood again to come to a meeting to discuss those plans, and then the zoning board of appeals who are reviewing that permit would have further discussion and further changes could be made. Well, I think we've, uh, come up with a list of items that we would like, um, to have considered. We've discussed them, we've captured them. I think I've captured most of them.
I've captured a few.
Is there any disagree with those that we've discussed that we'd like to have included?
No, I just don't know if it, if, I look down, no fence slash hedge on the east side?
Well, I, I want to add, if it wasn't that appropriate buffer landscaping between the properties, like, and somebody else has to determine what appropriate is, and that's for discussion between the Butters and, um, before the ZBA. But, um, you know, I think at the end of the day, it's important to have this house fit in and have whatever family potentially lives in this house to be welcomed into the community and not isolated. So, again, I don't know what appropriate is, but, um, we don't want to clear cut the lot. We don't want to wedge it up against the lot line. We want to create safety and not hazard. And the construction period is important, needs to be done cognizant of it being done in a dense neighborhood where there are many children. Everyone's been in a situation like that, it requires some information from everybody, but, um, it can be done in a way that's respectful of the, of the neighbors. So with that, I, um, will take a motion, if anybody's willing to give one, about, um, the Board of Selectmen, uh, providing a letter of support with the provisions, so know they...
Some move. Second.
All in accord. Okay, no reposed? You look like you're going to say something. Okay, can, um, somebody else have to put a motion about providing authorization to, to the chair to sign the letter once it's reviewed by all of us, um, before we actually sign it? Can you provide a motion for that's co-authorization?
Some move. Second.
On the favor? Oh, opposed, none, and yet another. Motion to authorize a design, the Department of Housing and Community Development conference permit application as well. There's a letter of support. That's a separate one. Okay, so we just did the letter of support, so say again what we're... Authorizing the chairman to sign on the Habitat, National Habitat Humanities Conference Permit Application to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Some move. Second.
All in favor? Aye, that was done. I want to thank everybody for coming out. We do take your comments, uh, seriously. We will work to ensure that the letter we send reflects the discussion that we had here today. We'll follow this closely, as I know you will. And, uh, thank you, everybody, for your patience and, um, taking the time to be here. And, uh, we really wanted to make sure that this is done, uh, with respect to neighbors' concerns.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We still have a lot of business to do. Uh, Mr. Phil, then, do you want to come forward, so you don't have to shout from the back of the room? Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Okay.
Oh, you left your purse.
Our next item on the agenda is, uh, a pilot agreement we are being asked to consider with Amaresco Solar Power. And a pilot agreement is an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes. Um, back in early twenty sixteen, Westwood issued an RFQ, a request for quotes, for contractor to install solar panels throughout Westwood on both school and municipal grounds. Amaresco of Framingham was selected as the contractor based on recommendations from other communities, uh, and based on its experience with the solar industry in Massachusetts, and, uh, their technical responsiveness with other communities in the state. I will stop there, and I will turn it over to you to fill in what you think we need to know. We don't need to be schooled on the whole thing. I know you're definitely more knowledgeable than I will ever be on this, uh, field, but, um, Tom, keep it...
We have a series of meetings, the, excuse me, scheduled, had this first construction meeting, and some of that, a series of construction, as called. We have that metering applications, and now we have, uh, permits that for each building that'll have a meter with it, can be generated, so we've, well, longer than the project. Pilot is essentially a tax, is about eight hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, I've called that.
We are, yeah, joining through.
And next meeting, I will probably be sick, so then I'll just...
We have about eight hundred thousand dollars in, uh, equipment that's going to be installed for the program. Uh, all the equipment is owned by Amaresco. As such, they are potentially subject to taxes by the town. If we tax, we, the town, tax the equipment that's installed, then they take that amount and add it into the price of the electric. Essentially, all it does is make, definitely, a round trip. There's no point in us taxing to any extent the equipment that's being ordered, it's not an any or something else. So in lieu of having a fully essential amount of, of equipment that's being installed, uh, they propose, they, in Amaresco, that we have a pilot agreement of payment of approximately five thousand dollars a year in lieu of taxes. They feel that's something that might offset any material costs that might be incurred by the town, if they're managing the whole program, and that's what we, the goal of it. But it's far less than we'd normally tax it, doesn't significantly impact the cost that it was generated by the solar power. So they have to just, uh, pilot agree to be signed.
Okay, and we have come up with this amount based on review of other...
Of the town, it's a very normal amount. One that was proposed to us by Amaresco, and it's a sensible, but other town, Braintree, you can name others, quite a few of them, have called out similar.
I'm going to read a paragraph we have, and correct me if anything, that we were told that this paragraph isn't right, but maybe it came from you in the first place. "The solar power generated and used by the building, buildings, is metered by EverSource and Amaresco. The town is billed at the contract price of ten and a half cents, which is lower, a lower price than conventional electricity, and that is billed by Amaresco. The credit appears in the same month for the same power from EverSource on our electric bill for the power generated at the SREC, the Solar Energy Renewable Credit, at the present price of twenty-five cents." And I'm going to read the example, because I think it just put it on record and people can hear it and, um, try to absorb this information. "A simple example of how this works is if the town pays Amaresco one thousand fifty dollars for power in a given month, we get approximately a twenty-five hundred dollar credit from EverSource on our electric bill. This credit could be allocated to any account, such as the electricity used in the Downey School, and/or library, and/or streetlights. In other words, wherever the credits are applied, the savings will be realized in those budgets." Is that a fair representation?
You better say that you wrote it.
No, that's what I thought, but I'm still, you never know, I can read it while...
There is, I have, it has been a change of about a quarter cent in the price, because they found the transformer in Downey was inadequate, and it had to be upgraded, and the panels have approximately point five percent of the amount of electricity that they're not, they will not produce, as I originally thought, since it's a minuscule amount. And also, uh, there are two arrays on the Thurston that originally could not be put in, because they're redoing the roofs on Thurston. However, I was told a couple hours ago that it looks like it'll be done in time, so I am down, uh, back to Amaresco, to get those two arrays put back into this year's project, and the whole, that we can pick up the incentive from there, but that all depends on how, how far along we are with that new year.
Can I just say, I'm so glad you love this. It's great to have you. Okay.
We're close enough.
No, I defer to you, I defer to your tone. Your tone, five thousand is a good agreement.
The bottom line is this thing will generate over a hundred and some thousand dollars in benefits to the town first year of a new electric project. Uh, if we don't have any escalation of the cost of the energy, it would look likely, of course, it will be at least a one point seven, one point eight.
What other municipalities do you deal with?
We've done a lot, like Manic and others around, um, um, so that's, that's what I do. Basically, I'm representing Amaresco tonight, and, uh, I've known Tom Vee for years, I've also done lots of energy projects, well, actually, Westwood, other companies do, so. But as a solar project right now, the big issue right now is that REC two is a much more lucrative program, and what we're trying to do for this town is get as many projects built as quick as we could under REC two. Um, the Thurston addition, potentially, we'll look at it. We might end up having to do REC two B, because if you can get like fifty percent done at it, we'll still get the same REC two, less twenty percent, which is still a good deal. But this, uh, will really, I got them, our construction guys have been working really hard to get the panels and get them under, underway here. The reason we'll lose a half percent on panels is because the first ones we bought, because it's not good, better, best, there's all these good panels, but we had to choose one that we'd get in time, and therefore it gives more, we had to give up a percent of, of total power, but not efficiency. So, and therefore, everything, everything is scaled, but these projects are really good, we've done, like, we've done a lot of it, so it goes very, very good.
So, yes, thank you. So, Tom, when I look at this chat, I can't figure out, and what I want to try and figure out, how there can be such differences in like the pilot versus the price per kilowatt? How does, how does that get negotiated? In other words, for example, Braintree is six hundred, so a hundred under S right was seven, and yet they get ten thousand in the pilot, but they pay sixteen sixty-sixes, I understand. How does that work?
Uh, it, uh, it's computable.
Okay.
And, so you're, you're right, and it's a very arbitrary thing each town, but suffice to say, regardless of how much is in that cowl, it's either in the price of the electric or it's zero, it's, the electric price is down. So it's, it's just a passer, so the town may wish, because of the way money is distributed within the town, get a lot more to come in as a tax, as opposed to a credit on the electric.
I see, okay.
So there may be some town...
Okay.
...idiosyncrasies that, uh, that dictate how much they want to have in that.
I see, okay.
Yeah, it's just a slight adjustment up or down if it was changed, but we actually chose it, thinking it was about the amount of effort town might have to pay, because there will be some billing, and there'll be something like that, but just, we feel we should pay something. On the other hand, why pay yourself just to do it back to the town? And this was a relative to, uh, it's been going on for a couple of years, and therefore the size of the project impacts the per k of cost. So we just, we made up, we thought it was a reasonable amount, and, um, it does seem still reasonable.
Uh, Debbie, you're here as the assessor.
Yes.
Um, your, your thoughts on this?
Um, we actually, my board recommended one change, and that was that it not be stuck at exactly five thousand, but I, I, I don't remember the wording exactly, but I, um, borrowed it from the town of Wayland, who has another project with Amaresco. Um, it's just to make, see, what happens is, once a pilot is adopted by the town, I have to back into a value based on what they're being taxed, and based on what the tax rate will be. So we, um, the, we have the payment structured, so it's in de minimis amounts of around five thousand, to kind of make my life easier, so I can set a value, and basically what that means is, uh, one year, it may be forty-nine hundred, uh, because of the tax rate and with the way the values go. The next year, maybe it'll be five thousand and fifty, but, you know, we'll stick as close to the five thousand as we can.
And so the Board of Assessors endorses the pilot agreement we have before us tonight?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? I'm just asking about this, aren't you? Take a motion. It's been incorporated into this agreement that we have attached.
Did you look into the wording in the grant?
So I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement as modified and adopted by the Board of Assessors. by the Board of Assessors for the pilot agreement with Amoresco Solar Power. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both none. Thank you for making that somewhat painless.
That's great, good luck.
All right, appreciate you coming in and thank you for your work with the town on this, it's great.
We appreciate it, and we'll do our best to make it work.
Yeah, and saving on power and cost.
Twenty years, sure.
A good thing, all right. Thank you. Uh, I think I know why a couple of people are still here, the hangers on here. We have some positions that we are being requested to fill. Let's start with the first one, the town service representative. So Catherine McDonough, who has been a very good town service representative, will be leaving us at year end. So we are being asked to retain that position. I just want to have, add some comments before I pass it along to my colleagues about the description. Some of the language is a bit antiquated, so typing minutes is really probably not the phraseology that works right now, so I would just, just something like appears and distributes minutes, things like that. Catherine, get your notes just after our last personnel board. So you have to go back and change these?
Yeah, so we just decided to go with that job description, direction accurate, but I'm trying to update all, many other job descriptions.
I would also say it needs to reflect social media comments, like exactly what we discussed. Okay, having said that, any other questions or comments on this position?
I'm fine with the position, I, I was a little troubled by, you beefed it up a little bit. I mean, it talks about the taking some testimony from people, whether challenging parking tickets, a host of things. Requires high school diploma. I think it means some sort of formal education. You have a high school diploma with three years' experience, would we change that to a minimum of an associate's with one year experience?
We certainly can change it, we can do whatever we want to do with it, I just need the personnel board approval to classify it before it can be, and you know, I, I can give it to them and we try to do it in, you know, off-site, a lot of meaning, we can get the board to, you know, I'm not sure everybody how that works, I haven't done that one yet, so.
I just, I think it's a big job, you don't have a robust staff, you know, in that selectmen's office, and I think when folks come in.
We have a great staff, we just really have a large staff.
We have a large staff.
So here's a check how I look at it, John, that, the, the job description could stand, people are going to apply without degrees, you know, and that's been my experience, that regardless of what we put as the requirement, doesn't mean that we won't hire someone with degrees at the minimum, you know, our, our goal is to try to move ahead, our next scheduled personnel board meeting is until November, I didn't want to have to wait that long to get going and fill in this position. But I totally agree with you, you know, that could be that, could be that move be, you know, could be that the job would be reclassified, but in the interest of being able to get some support and a transition sooner, we decide.
I think you can take back to the personnel board that, or selectmen has suggested a reclassification be considered, that the skill set.
Yeah, I'm fine moving forward, but I don't know what the price goes up, we can reclassify.
That's fine. Yep, which is why they may or may not.
Yes.
Take our suggestion. Hold on, I think they don't. Okay, on that position, motion?
I move that we authorize the town administrator, who has directed, to post a filled position of town service representative. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Okay, Recreation Department has brought forth their answer to their staffing. I believe if I heard correctly that Taryn Crocker will assume the role that had been vacated by Mike Griffith.
Modified, but yes.
Modified, okay, and that we're being asked to approve posting of the now open business manager position.
Correct.
And I would, I had similar suggestions about social media being incorporated into that position because I think to be responsible for communicating programs and things, I think it's more than what we used to do, mainly it's just printed, printed mail, that would be my only suggestion. Any other comments, suggestions, questions?
No.
You want to do a motion to give this guy a break? I don't think he's got much of a voice left.
Sure, a motion to approve the recreation business manager?
No.
Yeah, no, that's recreation business manager. Do you want a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, great, all in favor? Aye, opposed, none, thank you. All right, and the library, trish you back. You've had a lot of activity in your library these days, huh?
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing, it's an opportunity for many, so that's, that's great. So we have two part-time positions that we're being asked to approve, proposing, a substitute library assistant and two.
Two of them.
Two substitute libraries. Two, two substitute, thank you, two substitute library assistants. And does this come about as a result of the inward movement? It does.
We started out, Andrea Barca has moved into an accomplice position when Anne took over as director and expert, and at the time we had a pretty, a pretty solid fluid staff that we were able to give more hours to the second substitute on call person, Linda Scarry. Linda Scarry has now been offered a position that was vacated by John Gallagher, moving into Nancy.
Great.
Which leaves us with nobody on call and no question staff really to fill shifts. So at this time, but both of those positions are both available.
Any questions or comments? Motion?
Sure, a motion to approve the hiring and filling of two substitute library assistant positions.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Are you glad you got to be here all night to get that, but.
I'd like to see what goes on with this.
I know, you, you get to.
Fascinating.
Get the, next time when we ask questions for the public, feel free. Thank you for your patience, okay, so that's good. Next we have a utility easement, two utility easements that are needed, one by Denham Westwood Water District, the other by N-Star, both relating to the police headquarters construction. They have both completed their utility easement plans, Denham Westwood Water for the water connection to East State, the new headquarters, and N-Star with the gas connection. And we are being asked to approve and authorize that the chairman sign the Denham Westwood Water District deed of easement and right-of-way for placement of pipeline to provide water service to the police headquarters at 590 High Street and per the utility easement plan. And second, approve and authorize the chairman to sign the N-Star Gas Company easement to provide natural gas to the new police headquarters located at 590 High Street for the utility easement plan.
So, second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. And we did not need a discussion.
You read that, so I was not.
I did, give you a break.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, second quarter capital release. So as is our policy now, after a town meeting and the capital approvals are obtained, we go through a quarterly review of the requests to release those payments, the pre-approved payments. And last quarter, we released a lion's share of what had been approved at the last Maytown meeting, two million one hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars. This month, we're being asked to release second quarter payments totaling three hundred seventeen thousand dollars for COA van, facilities maintenance and the DPW, down payment for two fire engines, end user technology for information systems and police vehicles. Any questions or comments?
I move that we approve the expenditures, FY seventeen, second quarter capital totaling three hundred thousand seventeen dollars contingent upon procurement, and the checklist sign off. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. Okay, Mike, we're all set on that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going to sign this.
That was your free act of the year.
Yes, sir. All right, next item, we have a gas bill from EverSource. We had this item come before us a few months ago. It turned out that N-Star had been undercharging the town for an extended period of time for the main fire station at 635 High Street. At that time, we asked our town administrator to go back to N-Star and see if we could gain any relief on the bill. I believe we are receiving the same information we did back then and so no further relief. And we have the opportunity to pay a lump sum payment for the past two amounts less a twenty percent discount to clear the books on this and have the payment completed. Mike, the amount that we're being told is sixty-one thousand seventy-nine dollars and fifty-one cents, can you tell us where the money would come from to cover this?
You have a reserve account, it was originally, when first established, a reserve account that was created to deal with any shocks that we had to the energy costs, so if, if eating oil went up or electricity went up precipitously after the budget had been set, that was an account that would go to when the budget went up. The idea was it wasn't used for a precipitous change in the energy cost, it wouldn't get spent on other things. That, we've since had some slight stability in energy cost and so at recent town meetings, that was converted into a reserve account that the board selecting to address budgetary issues on municipal or school side that may come up. This is qualified as one of those issues that you would.
And it's also energy related.
It is, it happened to be energy related as well.
So no, no further opportunity to amend this?
I pushed as hard as I could. I mean, there are some people who give opinions that are different, but I couldn't find an avenue to get there. So I, I think this is the best we're going to do. It has a twenty percent discount on the price that they were charging us and it eliminated the earlier years where they were not, they have no accurate records at which they could measure us, so it's more than a twenty percent discount.
Any questions?
Yeah, Tom, I asked you this before, is there anything being done, like a class action on these? It seems to me, I think we discussed this a lot, Tom, I have a client with the same type defective meter, like how was anyone responsible for that except the company that made it?
Well, I've talked to a few other towns.
Yeah.
Who use that. You'd need a forensic accountant to figure out how, N-Star figures out that even though the meter is defective, they're able to measure that you got the gas and how they're able to pay for it.
So not to.
The towns I've spoken to, they were working on the same arrangement.
She seems to be, that this seems to be some missing party in all of this, has some liability and responsibility. And my feeling is, probably is, every town is, it's so small that it's not worth the litigation fees, but together.
That is exact.
Together, I can mitigate difference, yes, okay.
All right, so it's before us to approve payment of the past two gas payment for the main fire station at the discounted amount of sixty-one thousand seventy-nine dollars and fifty-one cents to be paid as a lump sum payment from the selectman reserve account. We don't, yeah, selectman reserve account, so that's it. That's what the motion would be anyway, okay?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. All right, Mike, Tom, let me clear up that, that bill.
Motion up, up now.
I'm going to, Joe, I'll do the SEIU contract and then our last item will be to talk about an update on the double pole removal, just that an update. So would you like to tell us where we are with that particular contracted group of covers?
Yes, so the, this is the first of the bargaining units where we have, the union ratified the town's proposal and I just, my address on that, the proposal is for annual COLA increases of two percent for the three-year contract. It was a fairly straightforward process deal and everything that the union requested and the town is, is relying with is to get there. Increase schedule on the same timetable as the ATP, so right now where the SEIU union receives COLA increase in July and a second increase in January, we're transitioning so that ultimately they receive both on July first as the ATP and library ATP groups.
So the two percent COLA and then what's the value of each step?
It's constantly two, two point five percent each, so it's, it's four percent.
And just so the public knows, this is the clerical union contract.
Yes.
There's one other note here, institutionalizing a temporary out-of-grade payment increase when a bargaining unit member is formally assigned to assume higher level duty than another bargaining unit member, was that for a significant period of time?
Yes, that's directed, something that we've actually sort of done by practice, but we're institutionalizing it right in the contract.
So what do they consider to be, I don't know, extended period of time, is it a month, six weeks, a year?
It's more than someone taking a vacation, you know, so we're, we're still going to have people pitching in and helping out.
Like maternity leave?
Seriously extended absence, like a delay leave or something like that. Exactly.
They have to be assigned.
They have to be formally assigned to all that, like they're not doing their job, they're doing someone else's, we need a bargaining unit for, you know, extended period.
Any other questions? Okay, so.
Go ahead, let me do it. Then we ratify the memorandum of agreement with the town and the SEIU local date eight. Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, none. All right, that's set, and our last regular agenda item is an update on the double pole removal. I'm not going to read all this, but Mike, what would you like to highlight for us?
Okay, I'm just going to highlight where we are. We are pushing on a double pole, as the board has requested. There are thirty-five double poles currently in town that can be removed, physically removed, that means the wires have been moved to another pole and they're ready to be chucked, chucked out of here. They're going to do four a week for ten weeks and they'll get rid of those. There are another seventy-two poles and various stations are having their wires moved over. N-Star is going to get all of their wires moved over on those within the next, I don't know exactly how many weeks, but they're going to do, I think, two a week and get those moved over and then we're going to stop working more diligently on getting the other utilities. So the agreement that we had today with N-Star is that once a month, the town of Westwood will notify, and N-Star will notify the users in order, so Verizon is the end of the line so that we'll find all the poles if Verizon still has their line on and they're next in order, we'll tell them, get those done in the next month, then we'll back off to Comcast, then we'll back off to the town, which has two different lines, one's a fire alarm line and the other is, oh, the streetlights, the streetlights, we now own. And so we'll get those things moved over and then the next month, those all move up and then we'll do the same process.
So you have to manage the process.
That's right. And we used to do this in the past, so by that we think we get better responses from each of the utility companies and we get this stuff.
Who, who does it fall to to do that work from town?
Right now, because town, we'll be without town engineer, call to Brendan and talk.
Okay. Be sure they know that they have to speak up if they are having difficulty managing this, but it sounds like a good plan and we have to continue to hold utility feet to the fire.
Yeah.
Does that satisfy you, Mr. Hickey?
I like that.
You've got to be better than all we have in the community.
I love it, you've got to be, drives me crazy. That's terrible.
And then we can sell, sell the board more for how we did it.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mike, and thanks for doing that and give us an update in about four or five months, okay?
Okay.
Let us, you know, you might want to have them do a kind of a, a heart, a schedule.
If John comes in shaking, I know that we haven't done a good job.
Start with a little rest. His treatment, what's that?
Gee, I wonder where you got that one? Okay, we have minutes from our September twelfth meeting to approve, any, uh, any changes? Please go forward.
I'm gonna wait to see if Chuck is actually in the...
Uh, motion to approve?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post none. Okay, so we are going into executive session for one reason, correct, Mr. Gillett?
Yes, correct.
Okay, um, is it the right one? Okay, uh, the Board of Selectmen will be going into executive session for the purpose of discussing the value of a parcel of real estate on University Avenue. Discussion of the real estate value of this parcel of land in open session would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. The Board will not be returning to open session. I will take a motion to go into executive session.
So move. Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
And I say aye as well. So again, we'll be going into executive session for the aforementioned reason, and we will not be returning. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, October seventeenth, at seven thirty P M, and we will return to the selectmen, selectmen's meeting room in Town Hall. Thank you.